I'd like to call the Tuesday, September 19, 2017 Papillion City Council Meeting to order. Mrs. Butler, would you please take the role?
Florence, Mumgarth, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Thank you. And do we have an affidavit or publication on file?
That's correct.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. We have the honor of having a special presentation tonight. Ms. Laura Schwartz, new Executive Director of the Papillion Community Foundation, going to come and introduce herself a little bit and kind of the future of the foundation. Welcome.
Pardon me, I have to put my eyes on, because I can't see. My name is Laura Schwartz, and I'm the new Executive Director of the Papillion Community Foundation. Thank you so much for letting me come and tonight introduce myself to you and then just kind of give you an overview of our vision for the Papillion Community Foundation and our mission. So, I'm hoping that everything goes smoothly. I will try to keep it really brief. So, thank So, our mission is to identify, develop, and support community programs that enhance the quality of life in the Papillion community. So, what is community? Well, Webster says and defines it this way: "A unified body of individuals with people for -- with common interests." I'm going to slow down here. "Living in a particular area, a group linked by a common course or method of action selected from among alternatives and in the light of given conditions to guide and determine present and future decisions." So, the things that stand out to me, because part of our mission is community, are unified, common interests, guide and determine present and future decisions. So, to me, that's our mission, is what we can do for the Papillion community in those -- in that line. So, life is fast-paced, and people rarely have a chance to stop and just enjoy the moment. I'm going to try to pause this thing in here. So, our events give people to do just that, take moment to pause and savor all that Papillion has to offer, and this creates a sense of community improves the quality of life. Okay. So, I'm a little behind on my -- or little ahead on my slides, but we'll just keep going. So, we're celebrating the 71st Annual Papillion Days in June of 2018. We have begun the initial planning for that. We now have the capability of our -- on our new website to take vendor applications, which is really exciting. We have some new ideas for this year, or maybe doing a car show on Friday night, a family bike ride to promote bike safety, and also to promote the trails in Papillion. So, and how families can utilize all those trails there. The parade gives businesses and organizations in the community a chance to showcase what they do and get more exposure to the citizens, so it gives them a chance to kind of showcase their business. We did a fun survey on Facebook, and some of the things, the feedback that we got about the things that people love about Papillion Days are the parade, the fireworks, the monarch wings. Everybody said monarch wings. And the thing that really stood out to me was the atmosphere. Papillion Days brings a sense of small-town feel, and they look forward to it every year, a sense of community that it creates, everyone coming together for such a fun event, meeting up with old classmates, which I thought was really, really exciting. And it makes me proud of my hometown. So, there's just some feedback that we got from citizens about what Papillion Days means to them. So, for Winter Wonderland, we -- our official is kind of the official kickoff to the holiday season. Mayor Black gets to flip the switch and turn on the lights for the city. It draws about 5,000-plus people to the city in about a five-hour period. So, this year, we have the opportunity to close 84th Street. Thank you to all of those people who got that to happen. And that's going to give this event a chance to grow. People are really going to be able to walk around and safe, you know, safely and enjoy the event. It also occurs on Small Business Saturday, which is really important, so we can really showcase businesses in Papillion, the small business of Papillion. And then, we -- our holiday luncheon is a 40-year tradition that helps fund this and keep Winter Wonderland free to the community. So, that's really important. One thing that we're really proud of is the Veterans Memorial Park project, to be a part of that. Huge thank you to the City of Papillion for your support for that and the collaboration on this project, because it wouldn't happen with you. People like Tony Gallin and his staff, nothing would get done with that park if it wasn't for him. We appreciate all that you do. We're looking for ways that we can collaborate with city businesses and organizations to raise more money to complete some of the projects and the vision of that park. So, we're really looking at that and going after that. We want to create annual events there for Veterans Today and Memorial Day, so we're developing those ideas. And we've heard stories of people taking wedding pictures there, doing change of commands, doing promotions, military promotions. And we really want to find a way to get the word out to citizens to please share those things with us, so we can get that out on social media, because it really shows how much that park brings to our community, and we really appreciate that. We've gotten a great response from veterans and their family, as it's such a beautiful place for them to go and reflect, and that is really important to our community. So, we're looking at the potential for adding a static display, too, which is really exciting. So, so some of the grants and donations that we've been able to give throughout through our fundraising, the Vietnam Honor Flight, we've supported after prom and after graduation programs for both high schools, Sarpy County Backpack Program. We've been able to fund additional lighting for the holiday lights, flowers and planters in city park, the Performing Arts, the Police K-9 Unit, and Helmet Shield. Those are just a few of the samplings. So, our vision for going forward is we want to look for short-term and long-term projects within Papillion to champion. So, you know, we always want to have that long-term project, which I think will be Veterans Memorial Park, but then we want also look for those short-term projects that enhance the life and the community of Papillion. We want to build relationships with businesses, with the city, with the citizens of the city, so that we can continue our tradition there. One thing that I really am looking at trying to do is promote a volunteer workforce. A lot of people want to volunteer their time, but they're not really sure where to go. So, we'd love for them to come and start at the community foundation, so we can build a database of people who volunteer in the community and get those out to other organizations who need volunteers. So, that's -- I think that's a really important thing, that they have one place to go in the community to get their volunteer hours in. So, we want to collaborate with city organizations to help promote arts, culture, education, health, human services, recreation, and community improvement. And we want to look at our failures and learn from them, and then build on our success and continue the tradition in Papillion. So, I want to thank all of you very much for all that you do. Like I said, Tony Gallin and his guys, the City Council for all the time that you give and the support that you give to our projects, Public Works, Marty and Jeff, thank you very much for all that you guys do, because we couldn't do events like Papillion Days and Winter Wonderland without you. Lori Hansen, Parks and Rec, they're very supportive of our program, so we appreciate that. Mayor Black, you're an amazing mayor, and we couldn't do it without you, for sure. Chris and Amber, I look forward to working with you, and Nicole. And I want to just take a quick moment and take -- thank all the first responders. We had a minor fire at our house on Friday, and if it hadn't have been for the quick response of the fire department, we could have had a total loss. So, I appreciate it very much. Thank you very much.
Hey, do you want to introduce your board members that are here, and then also your husband for the people that don't know him?
Yeah. So, I have Margaret White, who is the President of our Board of Directors, Peggy Waltman, who is our Treasurer, and Joyce Stranglin, who is one of our board members as well. And she's also very active in the Papillion Junior Women's Club as well. So, thank you for coming to support me and my husband, Jerry. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Ingberg.
Sorry.
Seconded by Councilman Jaworski. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item E1, Ordinance 1740, an ordinance to adopt the 2012 International -- I missed one. That's why there's a bunch of people sitting around me. Next on the agenda, item D1, Ordinance 1788, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from agricultural AG to R3 urban family residential for the property legally described as part of the northwest quarter of the northeast quarter of Section 34 Township 14 North, range 12 East of the 6th PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located at 707 Grunthe Street. The applicant is Overland Hills Baptist Church. That's Overland Hills Point. Is there a council member that will introduce?
I'll introduce.
Introduced by Councilman Klug. Now, item E1, Ordinance 1740, an ordinance to adopt the 2012 International Building Codes, I codes. And staff will be recommending the amendments to the ordinance, which were included in the packet, and will take those up on the third and final reading. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Do we have proponents? And if you'd state your name for the record.
Well, good evening. My name is Denny Van Morlegh, and I'm with Regency Homes. But I'm here tonight representing the Metropolitan Omaha Builders Association, all of its builders, its suppliers, and subcontractors. I want to thank Mayor Black, and in particular Brian, for giving us the time that we needed to get this, this, this code, and we're talking about the 2015 IRC, the Residential Code, together and the amendments. For the first time in -- I've been doing this a long time, and for the first time ever, we're going to have uniform code standards throughout the whole community, all the building jurisdictions. Everybody will be on the same playing field. There'll be no more confusion for inspectors crossing the lines, jurisdictional lines. Our cost will be the same, okay? And this is, this is monumental. So, we are in support of this ordinance, and we want to thank you again for your patience. It's taken months and months to get it done. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming out and representing the organization. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? And if you'd state your name for the record as well.
I'm Tom Forl. I guess I just want to make sure, as far as electrically, are we still going to be using the NEC, National Electric Code, on this? Or are we going away from that and going with some kind of an international code?
Brian, I want to be, just for the people in the audience, I want to be a little careful. Public hearings aren't for a lot of Q and A, so, but, but it's a fairly simple one. It is a clarification. So, Brian, if you want to go ahead and address that.
Thank you, Mayor. Brian Craig, Chief Building Official. We are not changing any of the electrical or fire codes at this time. We're still on the 2014 National Electric Code. And later this year, early next, to stay in line with the state, we'll be looking at going to the 2017 version of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And keep an eye on the agendas, Planning Commission, City Council, because if we do change those, we'll go through the same whole process for public hearings and all of that as well. Seeing none, before I close the public hearing, I do want to point out, everybody should have at their table also a letter from Jerry Torzan, representing the Build Omaha Organization, and you're just saying they're coming out in support 100% for the changes as well. So, that's part of the public record as well. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Next is item E2, Ordinance 1782, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from agricultural AG to MU mixed use for the property legally described as a platting of the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter of Section 29 Township 14 North, range 12 East of the 6th PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the northwest corner of 114th Street and Highway 370. The applicant is the Archdiocese of Omaha West Papillion Catholic Community. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Do we have proponents? And if you'd state your name for the record.
Yes, Jim Stoles. And good evening, everyone, Mayor, City Council members. I'm the Chief Financial Officer of the Archdiocese of Omaha. It's my pleasure to introduce our presentation for the preliminary plat and rezoning of the land at 114th Street and Highway 370 for a future Catholic church and school in the City of Papillion. As most of you know, we have one Catholic parish in Papillion, and that's Saint Columcille. The parish has been so successful that it's outgrowing itself. It has nearly 10,000 parishioners, and it keeps growing as, as Papillion does. The Archdiocese commissioned a strategic study in 2015 to look at the growth patterns of Western Douglas and Sarpy County, and it was a strong recommendation of that study to acquire land in the Highway 370 corridor between 114th and 132nd Street. The Archdiocese and Real Estate Committee then went through an exhaustive search for potential sites, analyzing parcel size, accessibility, infrastructure, visibility, and location. This site was chosen as the best alternative for a future Catholic parish. We have spent considerable time planning this site, and I'm now happy to introduce Nick Klemek from RDG Design and Planning, who will present the plan. I'm happy to answer any questions anyone might have after the presentation.
Thank you very much. Do you have any other proponents?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Nick Klemek. I'm a planner with RDG Planning and Design, and it's a pleasure to be in front of you today and to be working with the Archdiocese of Omaha. What is being proposed is three items on your agenda today. This, the rezone, a preliminary plat, and a comprehensive plan amendment. What's being proposed in the development project is a K through 8 school, church, church offices, and an extra lot that may be developed as retirement residential or something along those lines. We truly believe that this will have an excellent and profound impact along the development of the Highway 370 corridor, and we will, we are in attendance to answer any questions that you all may have tonight on this and the other, other items on the agenda.
Thank you very much.
So, thank you.
Do you have any other proponents? Do you have any opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Item E3, Ordinance 1783, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from GC, general commercial, to AG agricultural for the property legally described as tax lot six, tax lot 6B, Section 9 Township 13 North, range 12 East, generally located on the northwest corner of 105th Street and Fairview Road. The applicant is Ryan Anderson. This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Do we have proponents? And if you'd state your name for the record.
Tim Barrett. I'm the owner of the property. We just want to change, change the zoning to what it's being currently used as.
Great. Thank you very much. Do you have any other proponents? Do you have any opponents?
Good afternoon. My name's Sam Helwig. I'm a sixth-generation farmer, living in that town. These people that moved here don't even live here. I've had two different people, companies want to buy my 180 acres. No one will buy it because of people like him, who don't take care of the land, who put up buildings wherever they want. They've destroyed everything in that town. I can't sell my land. It's not worth anything. This person doesn't even live in this house, live on this property, and just wants to change it so he can put up more storage units that we already have a problem with in our town. I mean, in the last week, Sarpy County sheriffs have been there almost daily by people breaking in, shooting out windows, lights. I mean, my farm is to the point where I don't even maintain it anymore. I just want out of there, but yet I can't sell it, because people like him just put up buildings and trashed the land. So, I mean, I, I don't know what else to say.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Are there any other opponents?
Uh-huh.
Um, no. And I, but we got a lot of people here, and I want to explain why. Public hearing is time for us to hear and take testimony, both proponent and opponent. It's not the time for active dialogue. What I will say, though, is the elected officials, the Planning Commission, do take the comments seriously, and if there are some items that need dialogue, continuing dialogue after the meetings, we can help facilitate those as well. And then, at the third hearing, when the council actually takes a vote and debates, we will also take a time for proponents and opponents. With that being said, though, council does have a right to ask anything and invite anybody up. Mr. Mumgarth?
Yeah, I was somewhat confused by the comments of the opponent. So, I guess I'd like to ask the proponent to come forward. The storage lots, or storage, how are you going to use this land?
Well, can't put storage units if it's ag, so I'm not going to put storage units. Eventually, I want to put, my daughter and son live on the property. There are two houses on the property. Daughter doesn't have a garage. Presently, it's commercial. I can't put a garage up if I want to. It was a feedlot that was, that was partially owned by my wife's father, so her family grew up there. So, no, I don't live there, but my kids do, and their mother and, and their grandfather lived there. It was pretty well dilapidated. It's all cleaned up now. The, there were buildings without roofs. Those buildings are gone. We've repaired other buildings. We put it in crop, reduced the fly population dramatically by getting rid of the, the feedlot. I don't know what he's talking about as far as, as storage units. I do want to put a building in there.
What would the building be used for?
Store vehicles and, and, you know, trucks, tractors, that type of stuff.
Well, as I read the staff report, you're asking for agricultural zoning.
Yeah.
And that would allow buildings that are used for agricultural purposes.
Yep.
Is that the use of that building?
Primarily, yeah.
I was like, primarily.
Well, I mean, I'm gonna, I'll have trucks in there, too. I mean, that won't necessarily be agriculture, but either way, I mean, I guess if I, I was trying to put storage units and stuff like that, I'd be shut down pretty quickly.
I would hope so. That's where I'm thinking, okay.
Okay. So, I don't, I guess I don't understand where the, the logic of what he's saying is. He's never talked to me at all. He certainly is welcome to, but I have no desire to do that at all. So, as, as far as him being able to sell his property and that, I, I don't know anything about that, but I would think it would be easier to sell. If you, if you go back and look at pictures before I got there and bought it, and you look at it now, I guarantee you that it's, it's more palatable now.
Okay. Now, I see that it's currently zoned as general commercial.
Right.
How's it been used in the past?
It was a feedlot.
Okay.
It was a feedlot for, for generations. Okay? And it was a feedlot that was well past its prime. Off 115th or 105th Street, there was a large building that the roof had caved in that they hadn't taken down. That's gone. There was fencing that was destroyed that was never changed. That's, that's been removed. It's all been put back into crops. There is a building on the west, towards the west end of the property, again, no roof, everything. That's gone.
Okay, here.
It's been regraded. It's been, you can, they do have, I, I can show you pictures. I've got pictures on the, you know, the planning department has pictures originally what it looked like. You can see I've cleaned it up quite a bit. I don't want to be in the storage unit business.
Okay, well, let me--
I don't know anything about it. I have no interest in that.
Let me just clarify for me. The, the staff report indicates to me that you want ag zoning--
Mm-hmm.
--so that you can use it for family residences, single-family residences, and agricultural use of the property.
Yep.
And is, are you telling us that's all you're going to do, what we do with it? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other opponents? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Next is item E4, Ordinance 1784, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from GC general commercial to R1, single-family residential low density for the property legally described as lots 8 through 12, block 6, Richfield, generally located on the northwest corner of 105th Street and Walnut Street. The applicant is Ryan Anderson. This is also a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. And the comments from the previous one, we will carry over to this one as well for the purposes of minutes, but do we have any other proponents or anything else to say?
Uh, this is--
And if you could restate your name for the record.
This is Tim Barrett. Part of the property, it's plotted out very small. It's commercial. So, when I, you can't, it just, it would be better used to being, a house being there. We have a house, a chance to get a house that's in very good shape to move in, and my son would live there. So, that's, that's it. And there won't be any commercial buildings there either.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents? Any opponents on this item?
Hello again. I'm Sam Helwig. I live two houses away from that. He owns the farm on the other end of town. I own the farm on the north side of town. Like I said, I've been there many generations. Our town doesn't have very good water. Out of the three houses, and one of the three houses has a cauldron, meaning that the well has to pump into another tank, and that's the water that they get to use. Bill Allen, these are two very reputable through our area, well people that have no problem writing a letter or whatever that they said that you guys might want, stating that like, his farm, when the Johnsons used to have it as a feedlot, there was five wells that were put in. I recently just had problems on my farm with my well. It cost me a lot of money and a lot of probing on almost 150 acres to get another well. My biggest concern to this, if they put another house there, if I don't have water, or my well dries up, or I need a cauldron, my house becomes useless. I have to then have a truck and then pump water into my house. And that was the other thing that the other two people that were here last time brought up, and that's pretty much our biggest concern to that, is, I mean, my house, it's been in my generate, or my family since it was built, is now a shed. I mean, so, that's our biggest--
Thank you. Mr. Mumgarth, did you have something?
Well, sure, I will. I thought I was gonna, sir, could you come back? I thought I was going to find the answer in the material here, but I'm not, so I'll just ask you. Okay, now, I'm, I'm a bit confused. First off, the only rea, as I understand it, the only reason this is in front of us is because of our annexations that took our zoning control down into that area. So, I mean, this has been subject to both either probably the county's control for years, and it was a feedlot.
No, this is actually--
Yeah, okay.
--22 acres of a farmland that's just on the--
Right on the north edge.
Yeah, like just a little J part.
I'm sorry, yeah. The previous one, right down the road from this--
Yes.
--was a feedlot.
Yes.
And this was an empty lot.
Or, I mean, it had crops on it since it's ever been had crops on it.
Okay. And it seems to me that a feedlot is a pretty intensive use, and I think, as you say, it had five wells on it, so it was using a fair amount of water.
Yeah, but even wells can't pump more than 500 feet from the actual well to wherever it's going. The properties of where he's wanting to put this, from where his other property is, they wouldn't, you couldn't pump from that land to this land. You're going to have to pump pretty much in the three rows of our houses. You'd have to then put it in that lot. You, I mean, it wouldn't be in the feedlot or in the cornfield next to it. And I mean, like I said, the well guys have no problem just to write any letters. I mean, it's pretty much in a straight line from my well to my neighbor's well, to my other neighbor's well. Like, it's a straight line, like--
Okay. I, I guess, well, have you gotten any information from any state agencies or anybody who would have looked at the area to see whether a single-family home here with a well is somehow going to deplete your well?
Yeah, that's what two different well company guys, the same one that's worked on their feedlot, that's worked on the feedlot when it was my father was there, to my house that I had problems last winter of, out of just random conversation, has talked about it. And then, when I seen this, I called, asked them. They were like, "You will have problems down the road if someone puts in another house." Like, I mean, I mean, I'm just going off of what they said. Like, they've been doing it for decades, so I mean, I gotta think that--
Okay. Okay. Well, I'll, I'll tell you. I sit here and I look and say, okay, the village of Richmond has been there for a long time. Richfield, there's been there for a long time. There've been a lot of houses there. So, I scratch my head and say, "You seem to be proposing that nobody could ever build another house in that area."
I mean, just by, through the water section of yes. I mean, the other people on the other side of town, I, like, I've lived in this same house for 38 years, other than the time I've been gone in the service. Like, the other side of town is two houses. They share the same well, because they can't get water on that into town. And I mean, they have a cauldron, too. I'm like, I, I mean, I'm not trying to have my house be a pumping station because someone wants to build a house.
Sure. Here's what I would suggest, this is only second reading. You know, if you have some, some agency or somebody who could give us some specifics--
Like I said, there's two of them that I, I didn't know what to ask them to write on my behalf, or if it was just, hey, this is my company. I say that, hey, you're going to have problems. Like, they said they will.
Well, like, okay, I've expressed to you my puzzlement about how this could be.
Yeah.
If you have some information that you can present to us before the next meeting, that'd be helpful.
No, that's fine.
And I'm sure our planning people will, too. Now that we have the responsibility to oversee this area, the idea that nobody could ever build another house or building in that area concerns me. I don't see how that could happen in Sarpy County. I don't see how that could happen in Sarpy County. So, if you could provide us some information, I'd appreciate it, thank you.
If you've got that, Mr. Sturzma, who is the planning director on the second floor of City Hall, um-
Oh.
The partially bald-headed guy.
So, you're the one that just wants that, the letters?
If you can get, if you can get that to him-
Yes, yes, sir.
And then he'll get it, he'll get it distributed and part of the record.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Do we have any other opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Next is item E five, Ordinance seventeen eighty-seven, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from agricultural AG to RE, rural residential estates for the property legally described as attractive land, located in the part of the northeast quarter of the northeast quarter of Section fourteen, Township thirteen, north, range twelve east of the six P M, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the no-, on the southwest corner of Fairview Road and South Seventy-Second Street. The applicant is Thomas Pryble. Um, this is a public hearing, I'll open the public hearing. Do we have proponents?
Good evening, Mark Westergaard with the N A Consulting Group, one oh nine oh nine Mill Valley Road, uh, also here with me is the owner, Tom Pryble, and, uh, Pat Sullivan, his attorney. Um, so this is a two-lot subdivision that was, uh, that was called for, uh, because, uh, Mr. Pryble would like to sell, uh, his homestead along with a small acreage, which is not allowed in, in the ag district. So, uh, we worked with staff, came up with a layout of this property that it might look like when it, uh, is future, developed in the future, and we, uh, did a two-lot subdivision, three acres around the house and the balance of the forty acres, uh, as the other lot. Only the three-acre lot is being rezoned, the rest of the property will remain ag. And, um, so it takes care of right-of-way for the future streets, both on the west side and along the north and east sides. So, um, with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents?
Good evening, Mayor, uh, Council and, uh, City Administrators. Just a quick comment on that-
Can you state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry, Pat Sullivan Adams and Sullivan. Um, just a point of clarity, um, this homestead is actually a fairly substantial home, we've had a lot of situations where we've had old farmsteads that are fairly small, maybe one-car garage houses, and generally we've done plating and so forth where we've kind of worked around that with the anticipation that that house would, uh, as the generations passed, would then be torn down and be, uh, combined into the kind of new, more modern neighborhood. This house is only about twenty years old, it's a pretty substantial house, about five thousand square feet. It's not something where it's just gonna get moved or otherwise reconfigured at some point. So what we tried to do, and it may be in your packet, I can't recall, we tried to set up a situation where we could put this three-acre lot and not mess up future development in, in the process. So we figured out where roads would go in and how we could do that. We did sort of propose the layout, that's not necessarily where it's gonna go, but we did enough as far as setbacks and other things for roads so that we didn't, uh, get into a situation where we were, uh, an impediment to growth or, uh, modern-type development in the future.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Close the public hearing. Item F one, Ordinance seventeen eighty, an ordinance to amend Section one ninety-five dash twelve dot two, service for community, for communities operating existing community water systems of Chapter one ninety-five Water to update tariff rates for emergency, supplemental, and total water supply connections for such existing community water systems, simplify the tariff rate details of Section one ninety-five twelve dot two, and to provide for an effective date. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance seventeen eighty? Motion by Councilman Stube, second by Councilman Glover. Any council discussion? Please vote.
Seven eight zero nace.
Motion passes. Next is item F two, Resolution R seventeen zero one four nine, this is a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a preliminary plat for the property legally described as attractive land located in part of the northeast quarter of the northeast quarter of Section fourteen, Township thirteen, north, range twelve east of the six P M, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the southwest corner of Fairview Road and South Seventy-Second. The applicant is Thomas Pryble. This is a public hearing, I'll open the public hearing, and I will carry the previous comments over as well for the minutes. Do we have any other proponents? Any opponents? Close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R seventeen zero one four nine? Motion by Councilman Jaworski? Second by Councilman Mungard. Any council discussion? Please vote.
Seven eight zero nace.
Motion passes. Item F three, Resolution R seventeen zero one six seven, a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a preliminary plat for the property legally described as a plating of the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter of Section twenty-nine, Township fourteen, north, range twelve east of the six P M, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the northwest corner of Hundred and Fourteenth Street and Highway three seventy. The applicant is the Archdiocese of Omaha, West Papillion Catholic Community, and I'll open the public hearing, and again, we'll carry the previous comments over as well. Any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R seventeen zero one six seven? Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilwoman Klug. Council discussion, Mr. Mungard.
Yeah, I just want to comment to you, like, looking down the road thirty, forty years from now, that intersection is going to be in the middle of Papillion, uh, and we're gonna have Metro Community College on one side, um, quite a large commercial development on the west side, and I'm extremely excited and pleased that on the northeast corner, we're going to have the Catholic Church, um, and your school, and hopefully the residential community, that, uh, that is a very fine addition to what I see as the center of Papillion, uh, in forty years from now. So, uh, I'm gonna vote in favor of this very, very happily.
Thank you, Mr. Stube.
Yeah, I'm also gonna support this, but I'd like to get some additional information from the applicants with regard to phasing, you know, you show some-
Could you go ahead and come on up?
Retirement facilities on the north side, kind of give us an idea as far as what your plan is, when you plan to be open, you know, things like that.
Um, sure, I will, I would defer some of the phasing, uh, to Mr. Stills. The obvious priority is lots two and three of this development, that is the church and the school. Lot, lot one, my apologies, the north lot, which is shown to house the, uh, retirement residential, uh, would be a later phase and is shown as the highest, uh, use of that land, um, as requested by the planning department. My understanding is that it takes some time to form a parish, uh, so we're looking at about five years.
Did that answer, do you need more? Okay, thank you very much. Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Seven eight zero nace.
Motion passes. Next is item F four, Resolution R seventeen zero one six eight, a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a comprehensive plan amendment to change the future land use designation from mixed-use, low-density residential and medium-density residential to park civic site and medium-density residential for the property legally described as a plating of the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter of Section twenty-nine, Township fourteen, north, range twelve east of the six P M, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the northwest corner of Hundred and Fourteenth Street and Highway three seventy. The applicant is the Archdiocese of Omaha, West Pap-, West Papillion Catholic Community, and again, a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing, we'll carry the previous comments over as well. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R seventeen zero one six eight? Motion by Councilman Ingberg, second by Councilwoman Klug. Any other council discussion? Please vote.
Seven eight zero nace.
Motion passes, thank you. Item F five, Resolution R seventeen zero one six nine, a resolution to approve easement acquisitions for Hundred and Twentieth Street from Cornhusker Road to Roberts Road in the amount not to exceed thirty-eight thousand six hundred and twenty dollars. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R seventeen zero one six nine? Motion by Councilman Stube? Second by Councilman Glover. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Seven eight zero nace.
Motion passes. Item F six, Resolution R seventeen zero one seven one. A resolution to approve an inter-local agreement creating the Sarpy County and Sarpy City's wastewater agency. Is there a motion to approve of Resolution R seventeen zero one seven one? Motion by Councilman Ingberg, second by Councilwoman Klug. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Seven eight zero nace.
Motion passes. From an economic development perspective, that's probably one of the most significant votes you guys have taken. Um, on that note, there will be probably October tenth, I'm gonna guess, um, probably a public press release and a signing ceremony between all five cities in Sarpy County and the county itself, uh, probably at four o'clock at the county, uh, boardroom, so maybe just pencil that in, uh, to kind of celebrate that and kick that off, that agency. So thank you for everything involved with that. Item F seven, Resolution R seventeen zero one seven seven. A resolution to approve a real estate purchase agreement for the sale of city property, part of tax lot thirty A, Papillion Business and Technology Park, generally located on the southwest corner of the intersection of Cornhusker Road and Seventy-Second, the family ER. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R seventeen zero one seven seven? Motion by Councilman Jaworski, second by Councilman Florence. If you'd state your name for the record.
Good evening, Tom Ackley, Mayor Black, members of the council, just here on behalf of the buyer this evening. We've enjoyed working with your city attorney, Ms. Ruth Piper, and your city administrator, Ms. Myers, to get to the point we are tonight, and look forward to doing some due diligence on this property and hopefully getting to a closing here in the months ahead. So, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote.
Seven eight zero nace.
Motion passes, thank you. Item F eight, Resolution R seventeen zero one seven eight, a resolution to approve a temporary grading and access easement between the City of Papillion and Prairie Queen L L C. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R seventeen zero one seven eight? Motion by Councilman Stube?
Second.
Second by Councilman Jaworski. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Seven eight zero nace.
It's all the regular agenda items, um, committee reports, I believe public facilities met. Is there a report from that? Mr. Glover.
Uh, Mayor, we had our second meeting on, on, uh, the possibility of amending our, uh, size of our signs on the I-80 corridor. Um, we've had much discussion about, uh, what that should be, if, if we should, uh, amend our sign size. Most of the signs out there are well above what our requirements are. I think the recommendation, we made a recommendation to, uh, the planning department to go back and, and put a proposal together, um, in, actually, the N I Z C. Mark, what is that, again?
The Nebraska Innovation Zone Commission.
Okay, some, uh, time ago, they made some recommendations on the I-80 corridor, actually to go all the way to Lincoln. Um, there was a committee that was put together, and the recommendation, recommendation from, uh, that group was that, um, forty-five feet would, would be acceptable throughout the I-80, I-80 corridor. So, um, uh, we, we ask, again, we ask Mark to go back, uh, with the planning department and put a proposal together that we would follow that recommendation, uh, with our sign proposals. Our, our current sign, um, restrictions go out only to twenty feet, and there's many signs out there that are above, well above the twenty feet. Um, we've reviewed all the cities that have, uh, jurisdiction up and down I-80 and, and, um, Omaha's fifty-five feet, you know, Gretna's forty-five feet, you know, so there's quite a variety of sizes. So, um, our recommendation coming forward is that we follow the I C, N I Z C, um, recommendations and, and, uh, there will be a proposal that eventually come to the rest of the city council for that, so.
Thank you very much. Don't believe any other committees have met. Uh, comments from the floor, do we have any comments from the floor?
Uh, kids, stay.
What's that?
We had a lot of students.
They're not gonna, the rest of them aren't getting out, no students can leave. Any comments from the floor?
Can students go first and all?
Yeah, we can do that. If you're a student, come on up and introduce yourself and let us know, uh, maybe why you're here, and nobody gets away from it, so go ahead and start lining up. Just let us your name and, and what brings you. Go ahead and go on up.
Hi, I'm Connor Calhoun.
I'm Sierra De La Castro, and he is the president and I'm the vice president of Papillion Mayor's Youth Leadership Council, and we're starting to make a few changes to our council, and we think starting here with you guys is our first step, so.
Thank you very much for what you guys do. Rest of the students, come on up. You guys can go ahead and start lining up, too.
What do I say, do I say like, my name and then my teacher?
While you're here.
All right, uh, my name is Jordan Kobel. I'm here because, uh, we have a project for history class and I decided to come to this meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Jackson Hazelhorses, and my first time seeing something like this, so it's nice to, uh, kind of get a feel for how these things work, and I'm, I appreciate what you guys do for our city, so thank you.
Hello, my name's Isaac Anthony, and, um, I'm also in A P U S Gov. and Politics class, and this is just a kind of challenge to get out of our comfort zone a little bit and just kind of see what it is like here, so, thanks for all you do.
I'm Luke Dostal, and, uh, I'm doing a project for my government class.
I'm Nate Denny, and I'm with Luke, doing a project.
I'm Eli Werner, and I'm also here for a government project.
I'm Emily Kokish, and I too am here for the government project.
I'm Maggie Blazek, and I'm here for a government project.
I'm Emily Canoyer, and I'm also here for government.
I'm Cole Polensky, and I'm also here for a government project.
What's the name of the?
Papillion La Vista South.
I'm Sam Miller, I also go to Papillion La Vista South, and I'm here for government.
My name is Aaron Edwards, I go to Papillion La Vista South, and I'm here for my government project.
Uh, my name is Ryan Winkler, I'm here for my government class.
Um, my name is Spencer Zivney, I'm from Papillion La Vista South, and I'm also here for a government project.
Hi, my name's Olivia Kusicki, I go to Papio South, and I'm also here for a government project.
I'm Matt Pearl, I'm from Papio South, and I'm also here for a government project.
Hi, I'm Emily Fustis, I'm from Papio South, and I'm the third Emily here for a government project tonight.
Thank you all very much.
Hi, I'm Luanne Klug, I'm putting on a different hat for right now. Um, several of these guys back here that didn't stay up here are part of the Titan Marching Band. Um, our varsity band is going to be, well, excuse me, the entire band, along with the Titan Band Boosters, is going to be hosting our fourth annual Titan Marching Invitational, or better known as the T M I. We're pretty pumped up this year, it started out four years ago, and it's kind of gotten bigger and smaller and bigger, and this year we were blown away, we were hoping for at least fourteen bands to come, and we have eighteen bands coming in competition, we have two exhibition bands, and we are having the University of Nebraska Omaha come and perform an exhibition. The festivities will start at nine A M. with the first band stepping off in prelims, that will run until three, and then our finals will be starting at six P M., and we are hoping to be done about ten P M. Um, it's gonna be a long day, um, just as statistics for you, we will have over two thousand six hundred students going across foundation filled out there near Papillion La Vista South. So that's a whole lot of visitors coming to our community on Saturday. Um, it's a great fine arts activity, it's one cost, will get you in for the day, um, so you can watch multiple bands for any part of the day or all of the day that you want to come, and of course, food and drinks will be available. So I just invite everyone to please come out, council members, department heads, if you stop by, most of you have my cell phone number, please give it a ring, and I'll make sure that you do get in so that you can enjoy the bands. Thank you for letting us speak tonight.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other comments from the floor? Seeing none? Um, any council comments? Just a couple of updates from the last couple of weeks, actually, it's been a busy couple of weeks. Um, second grade is when they start learning about government and civics, and they go around all the elementary schools in Papillion and, and, uh, visit, and that has started, I was out at Rumsey Station, um, talking. Um, number of us, Ms. Myers, myself, Mr. Thompson, Mr. Limming, uh, Mr. Sturzma had, uh, several meetings with some developers about potential land uses and development concepts they've got. Um, also, we had a meeting with Sarpy County Economic Development, they're starting to think about the Highway fifty corridor from a Sarpy County Economic Development perspective, and how do they market that, what's the identity, what type of site selectors do they want to go after? And, uh, since that's sold pretty much in our jurisdiction, we had a meeting with them And, uh, since that's solid, pretty much in our jurisdiction, we had a meeting with them to make sure that the, uh, they're kind of aligned with the future land use map and the comprehensive plan, so that the market's not getting different messages, and we can actually work together on that. Number of us attended at Hy-Vee, the salute to public safety on, uh, Sunday morning on the tenth, uh, that was a great event. Um, we also had a meeting internally, the mayor's hotline is being revamped a little bit, the software that supports that to make it more efficient, better tracking, uh, make it easier for residents, um, to enter items and track those items, and we'll get some additional reporting as well out of that, and we're, so we're working on that rollout internally. Sarpy Chamber has kicked off their new Sarpy Leadership Class, and, uh, they always start that off with a tour of Sarpy County, a bus tour, and each of the mayors get on the bus and give a tour of their city, so we did that, did that in the last couple of weeks. Number of us attended a couple, uh, some ribbon cuttings, uh, the largest one was, uh, Lux ninety-eight Apartments on Ninety-sixth and, uh, and Portal. Uh, that's a nice addition. And then we also had a meeting with, uh, Ms. Myers, Ms., uh, Coomer and myself had a meeting with Olson and Associates. Um, they're trying to project the outlook for Papillion from a major project perspective, so they can be ready internally to support their customers. And so we had a good meeting, uh, with Mr. Altman's on that. And then, I don't know, I, I was not able to attend, so I don't know who else was there, but, uh, Tori Pantalian actually was the guest speaker. There was only four events in the United States for a naturalization ceremony on Constitution Day, which was on Sunday. And the Papillion Historical Society hosted one of those at the Portal School, and Tori Pantalian was the guest speaker. Um, so congratulations to Tori on that. Um, I think the only other thing, if people are not aware, Money Magazine came out with their twenty seventeen rankings, and, uh, Papillion once again was on the list. Money Magazine changed how they're doing it quite a bit this time. It used to be they looked at communities fifty thousand and below, they changed it this time now to look for communities a hundred thousand and below. Uh, so you can think how many more communities came into the mix and what that may mean, I mean, it, they pretty much totally changed the way they used to do it. Um, things they looked at in their, uh, rankings, they looked at, uh, safety, the economy, cost of living, the schools, amenities, uh, commutes, weather, I think they said there were about seventy different data points they looked at on a community. And, um, the, the base of communities they looked at, there were twenty-four hundred eligible communities, um, that they looked at. Papillion, um, was sixty-five on the list, but I wanna give some, a re- what I think is really important context to how they shook that up. Twenty-four hundred communities were eligible. A hundred and sixty-five communities that were in the previous top fifty, the last six times, so twelve years. A hundred and sixty-five of those previous in the top fifty did not make the top one hundred this time. Uh, because, so a lot of churn in that list. Um, seventy-seven communities that made the top one hundred this time have never been in the top fifty the last six times. Um, so again, how much churn was in that list? Twenty-three of the communities in the top one hundred, at least one other time in the last six times. Eight of the to- of the hundred have been two times in the last six rankings. Only four have been in there at least three other times, and there's only two communities that have been in there consistently all seven times, and Papillion is one of those. So I think the really critical message continues to be what we've always said, is the consistency of what we do, no matter how you are measured, we come out in that ranking of the best place to live. Um, so I think that says a lot, uh, just wanna say thanks to the city council, 'cause you set the policy and the tone for what this community is, uh, to the staff that implements that. Um, really, no matter how we are measured, or what we've looked at over a fourteen-year period, only one of two communities who consistently stays on that list of the best place to live. So, uh, just thank you for that. Um, remind people that we don't, we cannot apply for this award, we don't chase awards, if we never showed up on the list, it's not gonna change what we do. Uh, we just wanna keep doing the right thing, but the fact there is some recognition is a nice thing, so um, for the seventh time in a year, which represents fourteen years, we are in the Money Magazine Best Place to Live. Any other council comments? Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Glover? There's no second, nobody wants to leave. Second by Councilman Ingberg, please vote.
Seven eight zero eight.
We are adjourned, thank you.